Oh, now it's good. Now work. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay. Sorry about that. Again, Mr. Sellers is absent. I think he's on a cruise, he told me, with his wife, so we really don't feel sorry for him. He's not, uh... Not working hard, so... But we do have a quorum. We, uh... However, our city council minutes from April 2nd.
Approve of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself already, aren't I? We have an agenda before us. Thank you, Mr. Welling. We have an agenda before us. Is there any changes or corrections? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling, with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Perks, seconding. Discussion? There's no discussion, no favors say aye.
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 Aye. Are there any opposed? Now, we have an agenda. Thank you. Now, council minutes for April 2nd. Any concerns with those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go to the work session for April 9th. Any concerns there? Those minutes. If not, we will acknowledge those as well and we'll go to the bills. Got a warrant register with today's date on it? Questions? Comments? Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch?
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, no favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. The revenue and expenditure report for February... Excuse me, February 2024. Anything there? Any questions or comments? None? Is there a motion to approve that report?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Perks with a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch? Seconding. Any discussion? No discussion, no favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Council, comments? Mr. Lynch, what's on your mind tonight, sir?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Uh, you have to give me a sec. Um, first, I want to apologize for not being here at the last meeting. Um, I went and spent some mental health time with my wife and kids. It's called spring break. Um, I wanted to make a couple of comments about the last meeting, though, and I wanted to make comments off the conference call, but I figured it'd carry more brevity if I was to make the comments while I was here in person. I wanted to apologize, I think, for the city for the way John Conrad was treated during the meeting. I want to remind everybody how much work John Conrad has done as representative for UNA County. It's not just the Wyoming State Hospital. It's also the shooting complex. It's also the suicide prevention. It's all of the different things that John Conrad has been able to do for this county, and I just feel like we should appreciate him for everything he does. I didn't, uh... I don't appreciate some of the leadership in, um, the letters that have been written, the emails that have been written. I feel like between the mayor's note that was attached to the resolution, I feel like the email to Mr. Lloyd Larson and in the email to Lloyd Larson that says conversations over the last many years. I do want to remind everybody that Lloyd Larson was the main orchestrator for taking, you know, half of our state hospital jobs to Fremont County. And, um, in my opinion, I think John Conrad is a better representative for UNA County than Lloyd Larson is out of Fremont County. So, um, as far as Wyoming State Hospital goes, I'm still a proponent of seeing what we can do with that, uh, with that space. I think it'd be a great mixed-use space with residential, with commercial, live-work-play opportunity. I would like to remind everybody on top of that, I don't want the city to spend any money on it. I don't want the city to take any liability on it. So first and foremost, I don't want that to happen. So, um... But then on top of that, I would like to disagree with Jen and reiterate that our economic development department is very capable and does do very... A very good job. So, I did want to tell you, Rocco, for everything you do, and I appreciate it. I don't think us creating an RFP would be a problem or should be a problem. Um, I think we could employ the business council out of Cheyenne to do all the heavy lifting if need be, but I don't think it would be a problem for us to create an RFP and just see what interest is out there. I also don't think it would be a bad idea to take a field trip as a city council up to the state hospital. If we can make it happen, let's get the keys. Let's go look at these buildings that, you know, everybody says need to be demolished. Why don't we all put our eyeballs on it? You know? Mayor, you take the lead. Let's get the keys. Let's go look at it. I don't think that'd be a bad idea. At the end of the day, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We don't find anybody that's interested and wants to put forth the investment. I mean, it's... Whatever's going to happen is going to happen. But I did want to express my, you know, concerns about the last meeting and, uh... You know, you can agree with me or disagree with me. I'm fine with that. You know? I know there's some people that don't want it. I know some people that do want it. You know? Whether it's worth more with those buildings there or worth more with, you know, land up there, you know? But I really feel like it'd be a great mixed-use space, and if we could do it and not take on liability or cost on the city, I'd like to see it happen. So, thank you for indulging me. I appreciate it.
Perks. Missed you at the meeting. No, I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling?
Uh, I have no comments tonight.
You segue me.
I'd just like to remind everyone that the VFW is putting on the leg of the Veterans Awareness Ride, and we're 30 days out today. And, uh, this ride in particular, there's going to be a great place to stop in Utah so we can... For those of us that don't have the time to go all the way to Nevada and come back and spend the night, the Utah ride will come up in rendezvous with the group meeting at Spankies, and that rides down in rendezvous at Echo. Anyone in wanting to go down to the rendezvous with the Utah contingent and come up this way, get ahold of me. I'll be riding as, um... Like I did last year. And other than that, on that same note, I want to put a thank you to all our service members in these troubled times that spend their time away from family and keep our nation safe. And a special shout out to my son, who's going to have his birthday out in the field training with the 101st Airborne, eating MREs instead of birthday cake. I hope he's having a grand time blowing stuff up. So, um, thank you to all.
Thank you. I don't think I have anything to add at this point, so we'll go on and go to our consent agenda. Is there any concerns with that... With that item? At all? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling, with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That takes care of that. We have no unfinished business. We'll go to new business and start there with ordinance 2401. Mr. Harris, tell us what we've got going here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance 24-01 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the final plat for the Burnt Hill Edition located in the city of Evanston, Wyoming, being more particularly described herein. Uh, this ordinance is on first reading. It is sponsored by Councilmember Lynch.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Go ahead and get my passport keyed in. Okay. We're in business.
It's hard to get the computer to do what you want when everybody's looking at you, don't you?
Yeah. There we go.
Under pressure.
Have to hit different buttons, not the arrows. So... No? There we go. Okay, the Burnt Hill Edition is located on the north side of West Cheyenne Drive, between the interstate and West Cheyenne Drive. As you can see on the map, Overthrust Road is located just to the left of the map. Yellow Creek Road is located off the map to the right. I'm going to be talking about, uh, public land dedication with this subdivision because it is a major subdivision, so, uh, kind of pay attention to that little blue shade area. That's an area that's presently owned by the city of Evanston, and there's, um, a preliminary proposal to maybe add to that as part of the public land dedication for the subdivision. This subdivision does include more than one property owner. There is a kind of a long flagpole-shaped lot or parcel of land for All West Communications, and presently, the developer and All West Communications, they are working on some kind of an agreement, date agreement, to swap some... Or pick up some land for the... To make this subdivision happen. So, this is the proposed plat. I added color to it just to make things a little bit easier to stand out. There is... This is a 21-lot subdivision. And it, uh... There are some lots. Probably be best just to show you that with zoning. This property has got two different zoning classifications. One is a community business developing zone, and one is light manufacturing.
So this line going up through here is the light manufacturing, the VFW zone, and this area between is community business.
So, in the community business zoning district, there is a minimum lot size requirement of 2,000 square feet. There's not a, uh... There's not a, uh... A minimum lot size requirement, but an open space requirement. So, minimum 2,000 square feet of open space that's required per building. In the business light manufacturing zone, there is a 6,000-square-foot minimum usable open space requirement per building. And we do have some development examples I'll get to, just to show what can be developed on a lot. So, Section 22, 17B1 of our city code states that "The lot arrangement and design shall be such that the lots will provide satisfactory and desirable sites for building and be properly related to topography and to existing probable future requirements." So, future requirements are going to be the building size, your parking needs, your setback requirements, and being able to develop some of these lots. And what I asked the developer's engineer to do is to do, uh, three, uh, kind of schematic site plans of the smallest, and some of the lots have quite a bit of topography to them. So we just wanted to make sure what is being proposed as lots are going to be desirable lots. The lots that we had chosen are, uh...
This lot right here. There's a large salt area that comes off of West Cheyenne right here that impacts that lot. This is one of your smallest lots. I've heard lot six, block one. Lot three, block two. It's kind of a lot shape, a lot of soap.
Those are the three lots that we've asked to have some schematics provided for, and I'm going to skip to those and come back to that map. So, this is the smallest of the three lots, lot six, block one. For this... This lot is zoned business light manufacturing, so there is a, uh, setback at 12 feet from the interior side yard property line. They don't meet that with the parking lot on the east property line in this configuration here. If, uh... If they were able to develop that site, they would need to get with the property owner to the east, the budding lot to the east, and work up some kind of an agreement to encroach. They can go up to zero feet with the interior side yard setback for all uses. But if they don't get that, this would... Particular development would not work. And this is probably the most, uh... The most hardest lot to develop, I think, between all of them that I've seen. The buildings that are shown are about 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, so those are the sites of buildings that you're typically going to see on these lots develop with being able to provide required parking for the size building. That's on a lot. So, this one does meet all of our city code requirements other than possibly that side yard setback. Here are the other lots. The one in the middle, kind of the odd-shaped lot. Again, that's showing a 2,000-square-foot building. They've got required parking. They meet the setback requirements and, uh... Little parking. One thing I didn't note on the other one, as well as all three of these, they all meet the open space requirement for the zone that they're located in. And there's another example. You can see where the lines along the bottom part of the drawing just below the building. Those are the contour lines for the property. They've located the building just north of the contour lines, and they were still able to provide a building. And I believe that building showing there is a 3,000-square-foot building on that lot. The... They do show a 10-foot, 2-inch setback on the interior side yard, but they've got additional room to kind of shift things to the west. So, this development proposal, if it came through, it would be a possibility to do, so... I think they did a pretty good job of showing what could develop on the lots, what we could expect to develop on the lots. If someone was looking to do something larger, they'd likely have to look at combining lots and that, a minor subdivision and that, and obtaining the lots that they need to develop it. Going back to the plat, just want to catch some of the easements that are located on the plat. The green easements that are shown along the west and north end, they are existing recorded easements. They're just carried over onto the plat. One of them includes our city raw water line that crosses the interstate and feeds our golf course. And then we have some with Questar Gas, and I believe the one in the lower-left corner, can't read it from here, but I believe that may be a power easement. But those are all existing easements. What's proposed is the 10-foot easements that are going to go around the perimeter of all the blocks and along West Cheyenne Drive. Those are shown as public utility easements, and that's typically done in all of our subdivisions, a minimum 10-foot width. Can place the gas lines and electric lines and all that within there. Let's see. There is a drainage easement that's showing in blue.
Lot three, block three. That picks up the drainage from West Cheyenne Drive and directs it back to the road line up to the north. And I'll turn out on the computer. This is currently the access to All West property. What's proposed is to take this drainage and change that to a utility easement for those services that go into their property. And redo the access on the 10-foot lot. So that's what they're designing now. This little orange piece in here, that is what the developer is wanting to keep as an access point. So, apparently, I believe there's the existing valves that accesses our raw water line. And that's why you'd like to continue to maintain that. Lot eight, block one, that's kind of showing in the dark orange to the top. That is a proposed land dedication for the subdivision. It does fall short. There's a, I believe, it's 5%... 5% of the total lot area within the subdivision to be dedicated to the city. Lot eight is being proposed for a detention basin, which is typical. We've done that with several subdivisions in the past where several lots are being served, as we have in this case. The other part... So, I mentioned the blue area in the city property. And that's the blue area showing on this map. This is preliminary, but this may be what... Maybe what will be proposed for... To pick up the other portion of what's needed for the public land dedication. So a .559 acre piece showing in yellow.
Head back to that one. Just want to point out that we have reviewed the construction plans. I did forward those to the council planning commission and the city attorney and that for review. There is sight lighting that's located at all of the street intersections. There's also some sight lighting that's located kind of at the midpoints of the block.
Around here, here, and here.
Each one of those locations has a fire hydrant located next to it. The only ones... Lights that don't have the fire hydrant are the lights that are located at the intersection of Peak Road on the west and east end of Peak Road. Services will be extended to each one of the lots, water and sewer services within just past the 10-foot public utility easement. And that, so we will not have to get back in later after the street's constructed and dig up the street again. And let's see. I think I pretty much covered it. Our city subdivision review committee has reviewed this, and there are no concerns expressed with the final plat other than All West has asked that... Until they work out their agreement for the land exchange, and that we would hold off on third reading until that's completed, so... Okay.
Of that fit. City staff would recommend approval on first reading, though.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Jacobson before we move on?
Yeah, I just got one. That 5% in the loo that's going to go on the south side of Cheyenne Drive, when are you going to finalize that? When will that be determined? It all looks good, but that's kind of being left out in the air.
That can be finalized whenever we do the plat.
It will be finalized before you file the plat, though.
Or during the plat. I mean, that's our intent. As you can see, the subdivision's kind of hard to get all that land in and get that dedication. And we are giving up the stormwater lot. I mean, that has a detention pond in it, and that's where our storm drain will take in. And we covered the south... The south side of Cheyenne Drive for the off-site on that as well, which carries across the street into our... Through this and into that pond and into the highway department's system. And so, we're dedicating that one, but we needed to achieve more with that across the street. Granted, the city has a lot of open space properties that doesn't really get used, so we're just adding to it.
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
That answers my question.
Thank you.
We've got a sponsor, Mr. Lynch. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2401 on first reading.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch? Seconding, discussion.
I hope you saw every one of those lots, Gary.
Yeah. Me too.
He can't hear you very well at all.
Let him know, yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on first reading. Thank you. Ordinance 2402. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, ordinance 24-02, an ordinance approving and authorizing a zone change for property in the city of Evanston from low-density residential developing or LRD property to rural residential dash one, RR dash one, as requested by Tony Weaver of a landmark particularly described herein. This ordinance, Mr. Mayor, is for the council on first reading. It is sponsored by Councilmember Perks.
Mr. Perks, okay. Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes. So this subdivision is located... It's the Aspen Hills Estates Edition subdivision. It's located between the Brick Hollow subdivision that's located just to the left and Aspen Crow subdivision that are located just east of it. When this subdivision was created, it was kind of an infill of that area. Access to the subdivision is both from Hayden Avenue that accesses six lots within the subdivision on the easterly side of the subdivision. The two lots, 405 and 406, showing on this map are accessed from Skyline Drive or the Brick Hollow subdivision. Presently, the zoning is low-density residential developing. That zone... The property was zoned low-density resident... That zone, the property was on low-density residential developing because there's no maximum lot size requirement. It's a really good zone to consider when you're looking at carving up land on slope properties so you can have larger lots to deal with the slope conditions. That's what was done when the subdivision was completed. So what is being proposed is a zone change from the low-density residential developing to a rural residential one zoning district, which is a, requires a minimum one acre, but less than five acres. There is one lot within the subdivision, lot number 221, that's located on the east, southeast corner of that subdivision. That's just a little bit over that maximum area. If the zone change was to be approved, it would be a non-conforming lot size. It'd be a little bit larger than, than the zoning district would permit, but. So adjacent land uses, as you can see, you've got residential land uses just to the west and to the east that are existing. The city's corporate limits are located along the southern boundary of the subdivision. You've got a couple of large properties, several acres in size, just outside, one of which has been developed residentially. So this is our current zoning map. The yellow, or not the zoning map, this is the Evanston master plan map, showing future land use. We showed in the comprehensive plan, that yellow area to be developed as low-density residential land use. You can see to the south, just south of the corporate limits, there's a kind of light blue marked at rural residential. That area outside the corporate boundaries is, we've looked at that as a future land use as a rural residential zone. Current zoning, as I said, low-density residential developing. You've got low-density residential established in the Brick Hall subdivision in the LRE .5. That's a half acre but less than an acre within the Aspen Grove subdivision. There are lots within the Aspen Grove subdivision that exceed that one acre size. They're non-conforming properties. If this zone change was to go through, like I said, that corner lot within the LRD zone would be a non-conforming lot as well, a similar non-conforming condition. Like to, there's a piece in the comprehensive plan I'd like to read that describes the use, future use of this area. So I'll start out here. It's under the section of the staff report that's titled, "The Evanston 2010 Comprehensive Plan." So after the Aspen Hills Estates Edition was completed, infill occurred between Brick Hall subdivision and Aspen Grove subdivision with single-unit residential development. With the Aspen Hills Estates Edition abutting and having primary access off of Aspen Grove subdivision and the Aspen Hills Estates Edition may be considered an extension of the Aspen Grove neighborhood. So just stating that, it does have access. It is, kind of functions as a part of the Aspen Grove neighborhood. So the Evanston Comprehensive Plan states, "The Aspen Grove neighborhood will be designated as low-density residential." The plan continues to state, "Many lots in this neighborhood are less than one acre. Infilling has occurred, resulting in an established residential setting. Less than one acre, or lots less than one acre do not meet the required one acre minimum to allow a horse. Lots larger than one acre will be considered non-conforming and may not be used for horses." Horses within the established residential neighborhood are incompatible, are incompatible use. So that's how the 2010 addressed that area. Let's see. Now, I did include, I don't know if the applicant's here tonight. The applicant is proposing to have llamas and the property that they are on.
This is a lot right here.
The planning commission met and reviewed the subdivision. There were, there were, I believe, three people that voiced their opposition to the request. There were some that voiced their approval or wished to see the zone change move forward. With the application, there is a signed list of people that signed on for the zone change So the applicant is proposing llamas at that location. They can have no more than one animal per acre in a rural residential zone. As it is currently zoned, they cannot have animals. The schedule of land uses is included with the report and they pretty much mirror each other from a low-density residential developing zone and a rural residential one. The only land use that is different between the two is a manufactured home, is a prohibited use in the LRD zone and a permitted use in the rural residential zone. So if it is rezoned to a rural residential, there's always a possibility, all the lots have been developed. They cannot be re-subdivided. There's a note on the plat that states that they cannot be re-subdivided. So you'll always have eight lots unless the plat is amended to allow additional subdivision of land. But anyway, this map, that's the only change anyway on that one. Setbacks between the two zones are a little bit different. In a rural residential zone, it's greater for your front yard setback, your interior side yard setback for principal and accessory uses. There is one lot, and it's showing on this map here, that has an existing garage. So if the presently meets current setback requirements for the accessory building, if it, if the zone change is completed to a rural residential zone, that building, accessory building would not comply with setback requirements. It'd be a non-conforming building. So it can continue to exist, but at such time that it's removed, destroyed, if they wanted to reconstruct, they'd have to reconstruct it with current setback requirements. The property owner is aware of that as well, so. I talked about in the report that if there are concerns with animals running at large, animal waste, that section of chapter five, animal and foul of the Evanston City Code does address that. That's where it would be enforced through. There's also a piece that I included in the report, I'll throw out there. So in the past, there has been some talk about, because Darby Lane is a private road, developing that as a city street and having the city take over the maintenance and care of that road. If the property owners were to get together and decided to improve, upgrade that road and do a major subdivision conveying that road to the city with a rural residential zone, we have development standards for rural residential subdivisions, so there's a more narrow road width requirement for a rural residential subdivision. So it'd be a little bit cheaper cost if they were to do that. I don't know if there, I haven't heard any interest lately in doing that. There's significant costs with that and I, yeah, I don't think the interest is there right now to do that, but just kind of throw that little tidbit out. So on April 1st, like I said, the planning commission held a public hearing and reviewed the proposed changes to the comprehensive plan and the zoning map. They considered testimony that was offered at the meeting, considered information provided in the staff report and found that the proposed changes to the land use plan and zoning map were not, were incompatible with surrounding land uses and they unanimously voted to not approve the zone change.
So then this comes to us in the form of an appeal? Is that, am I seeing that right or just the final decision is the city's anyway?
No, they made a recommendation to not approve it. Be up to the city council whether or not they want to proceed with the zone change.
I guess I'm wondering if there's a value here to let some folks comment? I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think there's some people that want to speak to the, but to answer your question directly, excuse me if I could, it's a, the planning commission conducts a hearing to make a recommendation to either approve or deny the zone change. It voted to recommend denial.
Denial, yeah.
And then the only body that can approve a zone change is the council. That's why you have it for you.
And I realize that there's perhaps many people here that would like to visit about this. And of course, this is just a first reading, so whatever happens tonight is far from over. So I guess is there, and I'm willing, I suspect everybody here is willing to hear whatever, if anybody has some comments to make regarding this ordinance before we move forward on first reading. Is there somebody, anybody that would like to?
Is Mr. Weaver here? I'm sorry? Is Mr. Weaver here?
I think Mr. If you'd like to, if you'd like to come up, we promise to be respectful.
So my husband has asked for this so we can have llamas, so he can go hunting with them. They're a lot less messy and they don't smell as much as horses do. So that's the only reason he's asking for this. We have four acres that we can't do anything with and he likes to go hunting and hiking and the llamas would help him out with that and that's, so that's why he's asking for it.
Gotcha. Okay.
How many llamas are we talking?
Four.
Four?
And I guess maybe, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I, and I'm, I like, of course, I've never hunted with llamas, but I suspect that's a lot of work in and of itself, but I guess maybe, Mr. Jacobson, this is a question I would have for you. I mean, if we can't, we can't consider a zone change specific to llamas, can we? I mean, if we, it's, it would open up to whatever.
Yeah, it would, the zone change would open it up to horses, llamas, alpacas.
Cows?
Not cows, but those type of animals, not other barnyard animals.
And I appreciate that. And, you know, I mean.
Cows, pigs, and goats would not be permitted.
Okay.
Like chickens or anything like that?
Chickens are permitted in any zone, actually, within the city.
Along with bees? Did anybody testify against this at the planning and zoning hearing?
Yes. Yes, at least, I believe, three.
Three.
Of all the residences that back up to any of these lots, have they been asked, notified what they think of the idea?
We sent out notice of the zone change within 300 feet of the proposed area, so it picked up areas, lots within the Brick Hall subdivision, the Aspen Grove, all of those lots. Definitely all those lots along Hayden and probably across the street from Hayden and areas outside the corporate limits, they received notice.
And then everybody within that that owns one of those lots is okay with it? And nobody in, nobody, any of those lots?
I believe there was, I believe there was one person that's outside, well, two, outside the subdivision. I believe there was a person within the Aspen Grove neighborhood that was asking about horses, if they could open it up within the Aspen Grove neighborhood or if this would and it would not. Brent Sanders, who has property to the south, he was opposed. There was also a person within the subdivision that opposed, and I believe he's here tonight. I don't know if you want to.
Sir, would you like to?
Say a few words?
Would you like to offer comments, sir? You're welcome to, if you'd like. Please give us your name, we'll be happy to hear what you have to say.
Hello, my name is Earl Masters and I live at 241 Darby Lane, which is lot two of this subdivision. And I've looked at it and there's, you know, 31 acres there, so there could be as many as 31 animals in that cul-de-sac area. And I'm against that. And also against the zone change. Well, I'm, just kind of have to address this more of a question. When we all purchased the property, we all signed a covenant. And one of the covenants was that there wouldn't be animals there. So if this zone is changed, is that covenant thrown out the window?
That's a good question.
So are all the rules going to change because the zone changes as well?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to it right, right this minute.
Would that covenant fall under like civil court?
Mr. Mayor, it's a good question. By city code, they would be permitted. What effect that has on the covenants between the owners up there, I'm not certain. I don't think that the zoning change is going to eliminate the covenant because the city does own the property.
Because some of the covenant, you know, it mentions like subdividing and, you know, the animal issue is in the covenant, you know, that there won't be animals such as horses and things like that. It also states in there that people won't breed dogs. And that's another concern.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, to respond, to respond to council member Lynn's question, in the packet that you have that Mr. Jacobson gave you, you will see a sheet that says petition for zone change on it. It should have one, two, three, four, five of the eight owner signatures. So, Mr. Lynn, that answers your question.
I can respond to the conditions, covenants, and restrictions that you mentioned. Those are not items that the city enforces. That, yes, the change in zoning, our land use regulations would allow that, but the homeowners within the subdivision, they would have to work out if there's going to be a change to their.
Mitigation of the covenants themselves.
Their restrictions with the subdivision.
I think this gentleman brings up a good point. I don't know.
So, yeah, the CCRs do not permit it and they cannot, however that is set up, they may not be able to change that.
Okay. Well, anybody else wanting to? Please, come forward, sir. You give us your name, sir, and tell us what's on your mind.
My name is Richard Stack. I live at 260 Darby Lane, directly adjacent to the Weavers. You just raised a bunch of questions, Earl did. I bought the place, my place, four years ago and one of the demands that I had of my realtor, Mr. Ottley, was that there be no covenants, no CCRs or any of that. So I don't know where the covenant went. I have no knowledge of it. But as to the other, I would really think that our one change for us would give us, should we choose to avail it, more flexibility with our property. My wife has big dreams and I'll tell you, happy wife, happy life. My wife has big dreams, and I'll tell you, I, happy wife, happy life. But, but, I'm really, my, my interest has really piqued about this covenant issue. I just, I'd like to know more about it. I'd like to see a copy of it, because I, you know, like I said, my, my demands were high on, on no CCRs, and we had actually thought about getting a pony for my great-granddaughter until we found out we couldn't. And so that's another reason, you know, she would like a little shelty, and I have the property to put it on there. So, and as to llamas, I have extensive experience with llamas, although I've never owned one. And good llamas are, they're wonderful, they're like dogs. Anyway, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate you listening to us. Is this, I'm in favor of this proposal. Let me give you some facts here. We live right here on 220 Darby Lane. These are about five acre lots. You know, we bought them, we would like to be able to use them for what we want to do. If there's any concern about the lots around here, they're all less than five acres. Some of them are only half acres, some are a little bit, little bit more. We're in favor of it. These eight lots pay a tremendous amount of taxes every year. We get no services from the city, no trash pickup, no snow removal, no road maintenance. So we would appreciate your consideration, at least we can do something with our land. The llamas are not going to be a problem, we live next door, and we're totally in favor of it. I'd be glad to answer any questions of anybody of, you know, why we shouldn't be able to do with the land. As far as covenants is, Joyce and I have owned this, this piece of property right there for the last 25 years. I've never seen any covenants, we've never had a meeting for covenants, the covenants say there's no dogs. We have four dogs, and I don't know anything about anybody saying that we're violating any covenants. So I, I can't speak to the covenants, all I can say is that we've never seen any covenants, we never had a meeting, so I can't speak to covenants. So I appreciate you listening to us, and thank you very much.
Appreciate that, thank you. Mr. O'Neill? Can you give us your name, please, sir?
Rocco O'Neill, 405 Overlook here. This is up on Overlook Court. We love our neighbors, we have great neighbors. I think the Weavers should be allowed to have animals, just, I think a zone change here sets bad precedent. I think it sets the precedent that you can zone your, your subdivision in the city however you want to zone it, and come back at a later date and change that zoning depending on the use that you want at that time, or the new landowner wants at that time. I also have concerns about Dwayne's laptop, about the shared costs on the Darby Lane development. We don't use Darby Lane. These overlooked lots up here, 405 and 406, come off of Overlook Court, and we do have city services, and we do have trash pickup, and so that, those are my main concerns. Again, we have wonderful neighbor, neighbors, it's a great neighborhood. I have a golden retriever, I love animals. I just think it sets a bad precedent.
Good, appreciate that. May I, please?
I'm Tara Lawler, I'm at 261 Darby Lane. I'm right here. I, we built in 2009 and in 2005 the land we purchased from my parents. Never have I seen any covenants, ever. In terms of the support for the animals, we're in favor. I do appreciate the fact that, I think you said it was one per acre, so you guys are just over four, so it's not to me excessive, but I basically wanted to come up here and mention, never have we heard any information about covenants, ever since we've had this packet and we purchased in the late 90s. So we're in favor, but no information about covenants.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else?
This piece of ground says the city owns it. What's the, that, oh, this piece right here? Yeah. The city owns that piece of ground?
That's where the Aspen take it is.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate the information, and I appreciate the comments on both sides of this decision. These are, these are tough decisions for the, for the city council to make. We, we want everybody to be happy, and I personally want everybody to be able to do on their property what they wish. I think that is important. I do think that, that ordinances and, and city regulations are also important, they have their place. For me personally, with this being a first reading, I hope you understand that regardless of what decision is made tonight, other than, I guess, an outright denial, the, the process would continue, it wouldn't be finalized, and give me honestly some time to look into some of the questions that have been posed relative to covenants. I think that's, I don't think the city enforces nor can enforce particular subdivision covenants, but they, that does pose an interesting question for me personally. I don't know if somebody else has some concerns, or whatever they would like to, we could move forward with this if.
And I'm, I'm kind of in agreement with the mayor. I think I might just go ahead and vote for this, give myself some more time to think about this, because we do have three readings, and I'm not totally sold on it, but that would buy, by the time I need to consider a few more things about this ordinance change.
Excellent. I also, I forgot to mention that I do, personally, I want to express some appreciation to our Planning and Zoning Commission. They, they, I think, take a thoughtful approach to the decisions that are brought before them, and I, I think that is a weighty decision as well, so with all that in, in mind, I think it, I think it merits a little further investigation on my, on my part, and I suspect others as well, so. But I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2402 on first reading. Do you have a sponsor? Oh, we got a sponsor, Mr. Perks is our sponsor. Okay. So I'll entertain that motion if somebody's so inclined.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling, with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it to move this along.
Mr. Perks with a second. Discussion?
Um, as, I mean, that'd be me and Mike's board. I've looked this over since I first got it, and it kind of torn up back and forth, back and forth. I think we have a planning and zoning department for a reason, and I usually don't take their recommendations lightly. The fact that this would go against our master plan is kind of bothers me too, because I mean, then, as Rocco said, it sets a precedent that we could kind of go against our master plan whenever we feel like we want to do that too. Even though I think a lot of these things should be a working document, we should be able to adjust as we go, that being squashed between almost three light density residential and event squash, you know, rural residential right in the middle of it, I just, I don't see that being a positive thing. I think, I think it opens a lot of possibilities down the road that could be, could be problems, so. I honestly, I am, I think it sets the wrong precedent, precedent in this situation, so I'm, I'm kind of against it myself.
Appreciate that. Further discussion? There's no further discussion. All in favor of ordinance 2402 on first reading indicate by saying aye.
I'm going to say aye.
Aye, I will too for now. Any opposed?
Nay.
I'm opposed.
Two opposed. Did you vote aye, Ms. Hegman? Did I hear that?
Yes.
Okay. So that is past first reading, again, that doesn't finalize this thing at all, denied. There's got a lot of, lot of decisions yet to be made on this one, so. But it has passed first reading, so I appreciate everybody's, everybody's patience and everybody's comments. We will go on to Resolution 2419. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Resolution 24-19, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, approving change order number four for the Roundhouse Section 4 Tenant Gray Shell and Loading Facilities Project in the City of Evanston.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor, members of the council, Rocco O'Neill, City of Evanston Community Development Department, this is the, the resolution for the change order we discussed last city council meeting. The, the structural footers in Sections 3 and 4 were installed directly under the roof joists, and so the structural steel design and the actual installation weren't jiving, and so we had to do a, a structural steel redesign and, and put in place a bucket system, so we met our, our seismic requirement there. So that's what this change order is for.
Okay. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce it with a motion to pass, Your Honor. I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Welling, seconding. Discussion?
Hard to know what you're going to find in an old building.
Yeah, it's, it's, actually, we have great, this is a great contractor, I've had a really good experience with tanner construction, so I guess just a little note here on the time and materials line item there for the concrete demo, that's going to be very minimal. Initially, we were going to take it down seven inches and pour over the footer, so it was clean up to the, the support, but the structural wouldn't sign off on that, so we're going to come up with a different plan that doesn't involve as much.
Concrete.
Concrete demo, I guess you would call it.
Okay. Further discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved, thank you.
Hey, Rocco, how close are we to getting them moved in?
It weighs off, I'm afraid.
It's over, okay.
Resolution 2420. Mr. Harris, read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Resolution 24-20, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston, authorizing the execution of a contract for services with the Uenne County Sheriff to provide surplus automated external defibrillators, AEDs, to assist in a provision of search and rescue services to the community.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mike Bresch, Police Chief. The, one of our officers is a member of the Uenne County Search and Rescue, Officer Schmidt, and he's, made requests that they attempted to obtain some AEDs. A few years back, law enforcement through Wyoming received 1,500 AEDs through a charitable grant worth about $4 million, so all of our AEDs have been replaced, every officer has one. The newer LifePak CR2s, a much better unit. We have some old cardiac science monitors. Officer Schmidt tried to obtain some more current AEDs through this grant, and was unable to do so, and now they're just trying to reach out to get something that works, they'll be able to put in the service. Currently, we're not using them, they're in storage, they're going to waste, and so repurpose them and put them to use.
Excellent.
Good idea.
I think it's a great idea. Having, having used an AED myself many, many, many times, I think the more, the more coverage across the county and across the need that we can provide these for, for use, will undoubtedly save lives. So I appreciate the, appreciate the effort. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Lynch? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lynn, seconding. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2421, Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Resolution 24, Council Resolution 24-21, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, setting green fees and other related fees for the Purple Sage Municipal Golf Course for the 2024 golf season.
Excellent.
Mayor, council, Kim Larson, Evanston Parks and Rec. If you, we are opening up on Friday.
Yay.
And, yeah, we're ready to roll, I hope. The weather's been cooperating. The proposed fee changes, you will see on the handout you've been given, on the right-hand side, under the 2024 column, the light blue are the changes that we propose to make.
Excellent. Look, for the most part, very minimal, I would have to say. Any questions or comments before we move forward?
I ran it through my stress test, my spreadsheet, to where the, the club's still supposed to get their proposed discounts, so it all looks good.
Sure.
Always worried about yourself.
And we're still cheaper than everywhere else.
Yes, we did some comparison studies, and this is a very affordable but excellent course to go play, so we'd like to keep it that way.
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved, thank you.
I am curious how many times you've played golf.
You know, I got to tell you, the last time I go, I like, I, I'm no good at golf, but the last time I played golf, my, I shouldn't say this, but my son, I don't know if it was intentional or not, but he tried to kill me with a golf cart. It's kind of, it's kind of.
He was paid.
You know, it's kind of.
I'm sure he wouldn't admit it if it was.
It's kind of dampened my enthusiasm. No, it's a fun game, but I'm no good at it. Okay, our next item is a preliminary review of Impact Physical Therapy Office, 140 Saddle Ridge. What are we doing here, Ryan?
So, the purpose of the preliminary review by the Planning Commission and the city council is to review the, the site plans, the building plans, to determine if the proposed development is going to be compatible with the area in which it's proposed. The area that is being proposed for the PUD is, is a lot, it's located up on Saddle Ridge Road. It's a corner lot, has a, let me bring up a map here, but, so it's, it's that area that's highlighted on the screen, that's the lot that we're looking at. So it's got a frontage on Southridge Road and Ortega Court, and located just northeast of the recreation center. So the, the Planning Commission, they met on April 1st and reviewed the preliminary plans for this PUD proposal, and I, I guess, I, I use the acronym PUD, and I'm kind of assuming everybody knows what it may be, but just in case you don't, Planned Unit Development is what it means. So they did review the preliminary plans that were submitted, and then after reviewing the plans, they, they did not provide any, any comments, changes, proposed changes to the plans. There was a letter of opposition that was submitted, we did submit that to the Board of Adjustment prior to voting on any variance request. Having reviewed that information, they did vote in favor of the, the variance request, it was a unanimous vote on that, so Planning Commission seemed to be very much in favor for the development. There are some criteria conditions that a PUD has to comply with in order to be approved, and kind of go through those real quickly tonight. So the, the developer applicant for this PUD is proposing a two-phase development. The first phase is going to be that, what's showing there in the proposed building, and the parking lot located just to the bottom of the screen that has access from Saddle Ridge Road and Ortega Court. It would not include the future parking area that's just west of the future addition that's showing on the plans. It would include an improved access, 26 feet wide around the building, to the back of the building to provide fire access. The parking lot has a 26-foot wide aisle in front as well to allow for. The parking lot has a 26-foot wide aisle in front as well to allow for fire trucks to get in. The Fire Department has reviewed this plan, and they are okay with the routes as proposed. The parking lot does comply with the city code requirements for the number of spaces, at least for Phase One. Phase One with the parking lot located to the south, they do have an excess of parking a little over and above what's required by city code. Once the, if or when the future addition building is done and the future parking is created, they would need to come before the City Council again to request a reduction to the parking requirements, they would be short. We don't know exactly what the use of the future building would be. Currently, it's being proposed in Phase One would be the office use, the physical therapy office use. So this is the building that's being proposed, it's a steel frame building, there is siding that's being proposed, similar to what's on Basecamp, and I did provide, here's a rendering of the building that's been provided to us. So it's a tan-colored material, and I believe it has brown trim, and that, I'll let the applicant speak a little bit more to that in his PowerPoint presentation I have coming up. So I went out today and took some photographs of the material that's on Basecamp, that's what it looks like. This particular siding does have a little bit of texture to it. They are vertical panels, they're about, I'd say maybe three to four feet wide, and they go the length of the building on up the side.
Is this a precast cement?
It's not a precast cement, it is, it looks kind of more of a metal type of siding, maybe an aluminum type of siding. But yeah, they're not proposing to use your standard ribbed siding that you'd see in an industrial setting.
That kind of has a texture on it, though, right there, doesn't it?
Yeah, I got a close-up there, so this particular product that they have on the building does have a texture. I don't know if what's being proposed has a texture or not, and that, the applicant could probably provide a little information on that. I noticed too, as I had passed Gases Plus at the office, that they appear to have a similar type siding. The vertical panels are about three to four feet wide, and you can see the panels there on the side of the building, they're gray color and shade. So that'll give you kind of an idea of what the building would look like. There are concerns with the request regarding compatibility of the building in terms of architecture, color, and even the size of the building within this particular neighborhood. I took some photographs of what we have surrounding, so you've got Evanston Housing Authority has property along Ortega Court, kind of a tan siding with a tan roof.
Did the Housing Authority express that concern, or is that, where's that concern, where's that founded?
Mr. Paul Knopf had sent me an email and asked that it be entered into the record with the Planning Commission. He also asked me to include that with your packets tonight. That letter of opposition is located at the end of the staff report, so you have that. So again, along this has access off of Saddle Ridge Road, you do have gray shades on the building with white trim, red roof. Material, residential property, a budding subject property just to the north, and that's kind of tannin color, white asphalt roof, shingles. The Evanston Recreation Center, red brick with a brown roof. Same thing for the Evanston Uona County Human Resource Center, that's the rec center. Pioneer Counseling off of City View has a wainscot brick along the base with kind of a bluish-colored vinyl lap siding on the upper portion, looks like some dark trim around the windows there as well. So I did provide some information in the report and numbered them, so hopefully I can kind of locate that. Talks about the sizes or different types of materials, colors, that are within surrounding buildings in the neighborhood. I also include the sizes of the buildings that are showing here. The first ones that I had shown here have a total area, there's about 12 dwelling units total within that stretch. The 12 units total about 8,400 square feet. The buildings here, there's, I believe, five of those, they total about 15,600 feet, square feet around there in area. That is the smallest of them, at about 3,000 square feet. Evanston Rec Center, that's nearing, just the building itself, is close to an acre in size, about 40,000-plus square feet. Human Resource Building is about 18,000 square feet for the footprint, not the various levels within the building. And this building here is about 3,100 square feet for a footprint area. The proposed building is, is, first phase would be 11,000 square feet, 100 feet by 110. Phase two of it would double the size of it, so 22,000 square feet, roughly about half the size of the rec center building. It would be a little bit larger than the footprint of the Human Resource Building at 18,000 square feet. Mr. Knopf provided the opposition, he's got a kind of a breakdown, a ratio from building size to lot area ratio, and that, since he did that, I didn't bother putting that in the report, but it's there in his letter stating his concerns.
I know that we've been talking about this issue, and I know Mr. Dennis is here, I know we've been talking about this plan that he's had for several years now, as I've been aware, I'm thinking. I mean, I guess my concern is, have we, have we been, have we been a moving target? I mean, it seems like this is an ongoing, I mean, when Mr. Dennis first proposed this plan and looked at buying this piece of property, I think everybody was thinking this is, this would be a good thing, and it's a beneficial thing for the community, a beneficial thing, hopefully for Mr. Dennis as well, but it seems like it's gotten stalled. What has been that, or am I, maybe I'm...
Well, it hasn't gotten stalled. So Mr. Dennis, he requested a review, it was an informal review at a council work session. The preliminary plan review requires that there may be some decisions made requiring the development in order to bring it into compliance with PUD requirements. So a PUD does require additional requirements than just your standard development, additional landscaping requirements, it looks at architecture, the size, building bulk, densities within the neighborhood. So there are additional review requirements that are not required with just a regular standard development. So, yeah, back in November, when we met with the, at a work session meeting, yeah, you got kind of a sneak peek, you had quite a bit of information to provide at that meeting. At that time, the applications came through, I believe, kind of mid-February, that we got our PUD applications, variance request applications, and that's when we were able to kind of move on that. We were short information to make the application complete, so that led into about March, early part of March, to get that information, which brings us with the Planning Commission review, the variance, and then the City Council review, we've moved this along actually pretty quick.
I appreciate that, thank you. I don't see that there's a decision here to be made tonight.
Mr. Mur, that's correct. What the process would be is that unless there's any requested changes from the council, a final plan would be submitted for consideration by resolution on May 7th.
May 7th?
The next meeting.
Okay. Correct. Can you come up, yeah, if you want to comment, Mr. Dennis, please? Please come on up.
May 7th or May, or 23rd, our next meeting.
Justin Dennis, 116 Alicia's Way. As you guys know, I did already present this to the city. According to the, what I read in the PUD findings, that yes, I did need to present this twice to the city. I did not read anywhere where it said it had to be, whether it was a work session or a regular session, so I felt that I did fulfill that. I was kind of blindsided a little bit that this was gonna be a preliminary again, so kind of holding me up a little bit more with time and money. I would like to ask if you guys could maybe do a special session on the 29th, since we have an, or the 30th, since we have an extra Tuesday? If you guys could come meet and vote on this, so I could get this thing moved forward. It has been, I complied with everything that you've asked in the city, and then complied some more, and complied some more. I tried to jump through all the hoops, and when I get there, then I get more hoops. So I'm just asking you if that would be a possibility.
We could certainly look into that, I don't know if we can answer that question tonight, Mr. Dennis, but we'll take...
Okay. You guys have any other questions on our concerns? Obviously, there are people that do have some concerns, but I was under the impression that this would be taken care of, that it would be voted on, just recently, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe when he brought it to us in the work session, I said, you know, my comment was, I love this idea, let's try and fast-track this, it seems like it's stalled. I've talked to some people that have concerns. The biggest concern was possibly the commercial use in that area, does that fit our master You just showed one of, you just showed Gases Plus that sits as a commercial use in a very similar situation. I think we have a lot of situations where we have commercial use that sit in a very similar situation, so even though it may go against kind of a master plan, we can show precedent through a lot of other situations throughout town. The other concern was facade. You know, you're surrounded by some, not what I think, they're old, dated maybe, but they're nice brick buildings. Can you do your best to make it blend in, make it not look like a metal building? And that was, that was a big concern of someone I talked to in the area, because, I mean, this is in my ward that I represent, so I would like to just bring up their concerns that they've talked about. As far as the use, as far as everything, I'm all for it, but I gotta express the concerns that I've got from people in the other ward. So I think both of those can be addressed, and there's no reason why we shouldn't move forward with it, though.
Appreciate that. Please come up, sir. If you'll give us your name, sir, and tell us what's on your mind.
Yes, my name is Ben Gillette, I'm the general contractor for Justin Dennis, and actually, he's sort of contracting his own building because it's saving him money. He's got his back against the wall just a little bit, and I worked out a program that he could do a lot of the legwork and help out in a lot of areas. And we designed this particular building so it wouldn't look like a steel building, even though it is a steel building. These sides that we're putting on it, they do have some texture to it, but it doesn't look like a steel building. And on the front, well, I don't have the picture, but on the front, we're putting in, I put an eyebrow in front to cover the door, we're putting a lot of, 50 feet of storefront doors in there, and we put some windows in there, put some trim around them, and there's a possibility, if we need to, to satisfy the city, is maybe put a wainscot up four feet across the front of that building, just to help with the aesthetic look of it. So we are doing everything we can to make this work, and I just wanted the City Council to know that.
Appreciate that.
And he's right, he's jumped through a lot of hoops, and I just keep telling him, be patient, we'll get this going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything that, what they want to add? I would listen to that, please, come up forward. Tell us.
Ben Bell, 200 Hathaway, but also the appointed representative by the City of Evanston for the Uona County Economic Development Committee, and I'm speaking on that capacity, that here's an opportunity for us to help a business owner not only expand, but also increase some economic activity in the community, including creation of jobs, which is part of what we would like to see in the City of Evanston. I would also make a comment in regards to the facade and how that would look, maybe outside of the norm for the neighborhood. If you look at the Evanston Youth Club, for example, is in a very similar situation, next to old brick buildings, schools, fields, and more importantly, right across the street from Residential. It is probably one of the most used buildings, loved buildings, within the City of Evanston, and I don't see a lot of pushback on people like, hey, that's an ice ore, we don't want it there anymore. I suspect you would find something very similar in this situation. So just anything we could do to expedite that and show the business owners and future investors of the City of Evanston that we have a place that's open for business, and we are pro-growth, would be fantastic. So just reporting back on the assignment you gave me and where I think we ought to go with that, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Please, come on forward.
My name's Chantel Sumption, I live in Bear River, but technically Evanston. I just want to express my support for this also. I think the location even itself makes sense up there by the rec center and by the schools and the soccer fields and everything like that. I think it's a great opportunity for the city to have some indoor options for our kids. We're stuck inside seven months out of the year, so I think even having something indoors for these kids that they're able to go do. The rec center's great, don't get me wrong, and they have a lot of classes, but unless you're signed up for a structured class, they still go, they listen to a teacher, they take their turn, there's not a lot of open area for them to still burn off energy, and so I think something like this could really be useful for our community, especially when our ages 18 and under is 26% of our town, of our population, so I think it could be, and we have 21 outdoor parks here, if I think I'm right on that number, and we don't have a lot of indoor options. So I think something like this could really be great. And I think the facade and everything is something that we can definitely work through and can be adjusted as necessary to make it work aesthetically, so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Your Honor, as I look at all these pictures, and all the different buildings and everything up there, they're all different. They're not all brick, and so this is just, to me, that argument doesn't hold water.
Gotcha. Mr. Bennett, please. Mr. Bennett, please.
David Bennett, 230 Bodine. Years ago, you guys gave me the opportunity to have a little subdivision up there. I think things turned out pretty well. I'm in support of this, because the school district, as you well know, we're always trying to find more facilities for our kids to participate and be indoors, especially with winter year round. And I think any of these opportunities we could do for the community will be great. It is progressive. Mr. Dennis is, is actually extending an opportunity for our community to be able to involve in other ways. If you go to the Rec Center, it gets pretty hectic sometimes, and we could use a little more space. So I think the community will benefit from it. Push come to shove, we'll just put a dome there like we got at the school. Make it easy on you. It'll be over with, and if anybody has an aesthetic problems, you can say, well, look at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, I appreciate the, appreciate, any questions from the council before we move on?
I don't have questions out there. I have a question for us, so can we make, can we do like we did last year and do a split between the work session and the special session, so we can bump this up till next Tuesday?
Could we do something like that?
Yep.
And that, that would end up being April 23rd?
23rd.
Is that right? Am I reading the calendar right?
We-
Next week.
Will it be ready by then?
Can we be ready by April 23rd? For, will it have a special meeting on April 23rd to actually make this decision, rather than, rather than putting it off to the 30th? Can we do that? Is that-
The only, the only thing I'd like to ask, the purpose of, of having a preliminary review is if you are wanting to make any changes to the current plans. If you do want to make changes, if you want to do wainscot on the building, if you want to change the site plan at all, size of the building is the concern or anything like that, now's the time to look at that. And then they would revise the plans and bring a final set to you for approval. That's, otherwise, what we have right now, that would be what would be brought before you. You wanted to bring that as the final case plan set.
I appreciate that. I, I guess-
I got, I got no changes. I'm just, I was just expressing concerns I had from people from the ward. I got no changes to it. I think it's going to be great. I think we go ahead and fast-track it.
Do you?
I mean, if there are some things you can do to make it look pretty, Justin, then make it look pretty. But it'd be nice. I'm, I'm good with it.
I think as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm good, I know that we've talked about this for a long time, and I'm, I'm comfortable with it. So if we, if we could-
Move it on.
If we could move along and benefit Mr. Dennis on the 23rd, I think that's, that's value in doing that. Given also the fact that our Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval as well. Is that, am I correct in that? In that word, is what I'm saying?
Yep.
The Planning and Zoning Commission, they, they, they recommended approval? There again, we mentioned earlier that their recommendation, I think, carries some weight. And I, like I said, we've had this discussion for quite a while. I think that Mr. Dennis here is willing to invest incredible amount of money in our community, and I think he's worked hard. I don't think there's any, any real purpose in delaying it any further than we absolutely have to, so.
Yeah, if there's no changes to what's been submitted, we can submit that as the final, uh, work session.
That work for you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Before we go on to comments from departments, I failed to mention, did everybody get a copy of a letter from Dudley Gardner that he's asking?
Yes.
And there's not really a vote, it's relative to the China Dig. I was supposed to mention that during council comments, and I didn't. Has anybody got any heartburn with that, that letter at all? That little, that he said?
No.
Okay. So I guess, I guess we'll go ahead and sign that and move forward. And I apologize, I was supposed to bring that up at council comments, and I, and I didn't. So we'll, we'll go ahead and get that taken care of, and we'll go to comments from, from departments. Just got a lot of people, Chief Vanish back there, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Robinson?
No, sir.
Ms. Lynn?
No, sir.
Mr. O'Neil?
No, sir.
Ms. Larson?
Hey, Bob.
Mr. Jacobs, anything more for us tonight? Ms. Harris?
No, your honor.
Mr. Harris?
Nothing, sir.
Have I missed anybody from the department heads? I don't think so. Public participation, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason? Please.
This is where, this is where we're all. Gary Spencer, 63 Aspen Grove Drive West. This is just an observation, that, that rerouting traffic under the underpass there, there's a sign up front that blinks 10 foot, is 10 foot under the open, there's a sign right on the bridge that says 13 feet. I don't know who's in charge of, somebody should do something, because somebody's going to get stuck in there and then say, hey, you said it was 10 feet, but the thing says, anyway, that's a squirrel, so.
I guess-
Something you might think of, somebody, somebody might think about, I don't-
We can cover it.
There's Mr. Peterson, he's in charge of the signage.
You're really effecting my bet on how many air conditioning units were going to get taken off going under there.
David Peterson, 311 Clarkson, Wyoming Department of Transportation. I am the one with the signs. So the decision that was made on that was to try to prevent people from going underneath there that were thinking that there was a 13-foot clearance. So we tried to restrict that height by notifying people early on that that is a low clearance, because we're going to have so many people try to attempt it if we notified them and said that that was a 13-foot clearance. So the decision was made on the traffic side to lower that to 10-foot to try to discourage people from going that route. That is the whole purpose of it. And, well, yes, directly underneath it. So when we, we do vertical clearance, we measure right underneath the structure itself. It does not take into consideration the vertical curve that goes down underneath it. So any larger travel trailer or semi, that's why we've detoured, the semis come in the other direction out of it and stuff, so that's, that's the whole purpose of those signs. So, no, we tried to, and we couldn't cover up the signs, the 13-foot, by law, so that's why they didn't end up getting covered up or changed to 10-foot, so. But that's the whole purpose of that there, is trying to discourage people from even trying. And by the way, we've got 40 in our office for-
40 is the number?
Yeah, 40 is the number for air conditioners, so.
Is that your bet?
Thank you. Any other questions?
We, we need to set a camera up so we can watch it live.
What?
You need to set a camera up so we can watch those-
Yeah, so there are the cameras underneath there. So I, I, I will, because I can't see everything all the time, and I try to stay on top of the traffic control out through there. But I have seen some semis try to deter and go around it. I know that there was one fifth wheel that tried to go underneath there, thought better of it, and backed back out, which causes traffic congestion, stacking issues. We had some stacking issues coming down County Road and up Bear River Drive, so we extended the green light at, on Ninth Street and Front Street to try to alleviate some of that. But if you see anything here, as far as, as we get into the busier months, I mean, obviously we're going to have some concerns, and there's going to be some issues, but, but you can reach out to me and, and let me know, and then we can make any kind of modification or changes as we need to, so. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to, please, Mr. Eskelson?
Rick Eskelson, did you give them the packet? I will. Okay, I want to mention that the work session lasts, the reason I'm handing these out, the work session lasts Tuesday, very informative to me, because we did a walkabout of the Roundhouse. And I know where the city's going with this, and we want to involve all the people we can, once it's in, and use the facility and stuff. But I had a concern over the budget, the money you guys are getting to help do it. And I'll explain the paperwork and the pictures in a minute. And so in talking to Mark Harris and different individuals, I got thinking about the bid you guys got, that kind of blew you away, on to be able to complete the job. And the money, the grant you've got runs out, I think, December 31st. Is this true? Okay, and so by the time you rebid, take a look at the, rebidding it with what you can afford to do, because I think the cement was two-thirds of it. And so I kind of come up with a little thing here with the paperwork you see. Once I got through and thought about it, I, 40 years of working in the roofing business, I dealt with a lot of material. One of the first things you're going to deal with is digging out that court in the back. And you, and that is to, so you can take care of the environmental problems that are, you're going to be digging out. The stuff that you see in the paperwork is like EPDM roofing, like you put on the Roundhouse, you know, and that's for the rubber roofing. Then there's another rubber type stuff that you line ponds with. Well, this stuff, the Riper Venom coating comes in 14-foot foot, 14-foot wide, rolls 100-foot long, and a lot cheaper, but it is for environmental. You can put it in the bottom of the pit and cover it over with dirt. It's used in a lot of construction where you put it down to control radon. And then you put the cement over, like in floors of buildings and stuff. So the reason I even bring this up is because I know, I don't know what you're going to do or can afford, but whatever you do, you rebid, it'll be the end of May. You have about a five-month window to use that money up, that they have given you. And I understand what you're doing. So I, if you want to read that over, I talked to Mr. Newsom with the city, and told him I'm looking for a product, that once you get it dug out, removed, and you come back with new dirt, this will take care of a lot of environmental problems in the future if you cannot put down the cement to, you know, you don't have the money to do the cement, but it does take care of it. The pictures you've seen, and I'm sure you have seen some, the first one is a Roundhouse in Durango. And the Durango and the, goes up, they, is, where they've gone in, cleaned it all out, put down the gravel on top of everything. And I know they, in the last 20, 25 years, they've done that. I'm sure they've taken care of environmental concerns. The second picture is in New York. This is what they've done with the rails and stuff, and the trains or whatever still go over that. Plus, you can walk on it, and there's a way of putting a gravel down, and then there's a chemical you put that sprays over the gravel that keeps it in place, so you can walk over it, a lot cheaper than cement and the, and the work. And then the other one, this one here, is another Roundhouse. And they went in and did the gravel, they put planks in between so people can walk on it, and that, unfortunately, that's in Asia. So I just wanted to present something that may help get this rolling, and so we don't lose the money, because a lot of stuff has to be done back there. So that was, because I was impressed with the walkabout last Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? If not, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone.